Good evening. Welcome to the August 23 meeting of Glendale City Council. I'll have to ask you all to please be quiet during the meeting. Thank you so much. Roll call, please, Mr. Kasakian.
Councilmembers.
Here.
Councilmembers Friedman, Garpetyan.
Here.
Ajarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Here. Next item?
Next item is a flag salute led by Councilmember Garpetyan, and we ask that everyone remain standing for the invocation as well. Please silence your cellphones and pagers.
Please join me in saluting the flag of our country.
Pardons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Famous humanitarian and physician Dr. Albert Schweitzer wrote that "The purpose of human life is to serve and to show compassion and the will to help others." As we gather this evening, we pray for the safety and deliverance of the many people who are affected by the flooding throughout Louisiana. The over 100,000 residents whose homes have been flooded and who have been displaced require immediate assistance and compassion by all those who cannot even begin to imagine the challenges they face. We pray for them and their safety and that they not lose hope. As a city so blessed, we pray that our residents and our leaders show compassion and the will to help those in need, because one day it will be our turn to turn to others and seek their help. We pray for those who are there now, providing assistance and hope that this disaster will soon pass and the people of the great state of Louisiana may begin to piece their lives back together. We pray for all of this and peace tonight and always. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. If I can ask again, we have a full house tonight, and I'm so glad to see all of you here. But can you please silence your cellphones? Thank you. Mr. Kasakian, next item?
Next item is the report. The agenda for the August 23, 2016 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed Thursday, August 18, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next?
Under presentation and appointments at 3:00 a.m. is agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, August 30, 2016.
Thank you. Ms. Spears?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority to commence at 3:00 p.m. we have one business agenda item. Inter Director of Community Services and Parks, this is regarding the 2016 homeless continuum of care funding application for HUD. That afternoon as well, we have a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Housing Authority, Director of Community Development. This is regarding the fiscal year 2016-17 Glendale Housing Authority budget adjustment to add HUD grant funding in the amount of $150,582 for veterans' supportive housing rental assistance. We have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council to commence at 3:00 p.m. as well. Director of Community Development, this is regarding the Central Park Armenian-American Museum. This is an RFP for design services and a CEQA retainer. That evening for the council meeting to commence at 6:00 p.m. we have a number of consent items. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power was regarding the Glendale Water and Power Disclosure and Power Content Label for Calendar Year 2015. General Manager of GWP California Energy Commission Emissions Performance Standard Compliance Filing for the Intermountain Power Project, Repowering Project. Director of Director of Library Arts and Culture, Amendment of a Professional Services Agreement with Glendale Arts. Also Director of Library Arts and Culture, this is the Library Connection at Adam Square at 1100 Chevy Chase Drive. This is a proposal of our lease agreement. Interim Community Services and Parks Director, this is regarding safe, clean neighborhood parks, open space, beaches, rivers, protection and water conservation measure. And also Director of Library Arts and Culture and CIO, this is regarding the acceptance of a grant funds for the California Public Library broadband project. We have a number of action items that evening. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, as well as the CIO and the Directors of Finance and Community Development. This is a presentation of the final Glendale Water and Power Fiber Utility Business Plan. Director of Community Development, amending Chapter 8.06 of the Glendale Municipal Code to adopt a conforming ordinance to regulate mobile food facilities relating to cleanliness, inspections, and grading. Director of Community Development, the South Glendale Community Plan Workshops. City Attorney, we're going to have an ordinance relating to mobile billboard advertising displays. We have two items from the City Manager's Office, consideration of membership in the California Contract Cities Association. And lastly, request to transfer funds from the Commission on the Status of Women's Fund Balance to the Community Foundation of the Verdugos. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item is consent items, including minutes following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
Okay. Would anyone like to pull any of the items on the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull 4F.
Anyone else?
I'll move the balance of the calendar.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Roll call?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetyan.
Yes.
Ajarian.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Would you please read consent item?
4F.
4F, thank you, into the record.
4F is Director of Public Works regarding design-build of tenant improvement at the C.E. Perkins Building. F1 is motion awarding a design-build contract for tenant improvements at C.E. Perkins Building to Dorado Design and Construction, Inc. in the amount of $1,257,070 plus a 10% contract contingency of $125,707, and authorizing City Manager to execute the contract. Two, resolution of appropriations, transfer $20,139 from federal and state grants Housing Assistance Fund, 24210-202 to the Furniture and Equipment Housing Assistance Fund, Housing Assistance Section 8 Housing Choice voucher program,
Thank you. Mr. Garpetyan, did you want to have a question on this item?
Yes. Just want to get an explanation as to what this work is, what's the scope of the work is, and is this only for, it says design-build, is this just to design and get the job done as well? I mean, for the work as well, or?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Councilman Garpetyan, the project, the scope of work for the project does involve, as you indicated, designing the improvements as well as the construction. So the firm that we are recommending for award, Dorado Design and Construction, will complete the entire work, including design permitting, they need to get building permits as well, and complete the implementation of the construction elements.
And what's it going to do with the exterior of it? I mean, the water fountain?
Yes, there's, yes, there is a feature. The form of water fountain feature will be landscaped and re-renovated without the water.
And are we going to see this design before it was built? Or is just?
The design currently is not done. This firm will provide a concept design and then will take it through the permitting process. But if it's your pleasure, we can bring it to council for review and consideration.
The exterior design, I would like to see personally, but I don't know about my fellow colleagues.
You're okay with the water feature not being there?
Oh, look, the main water fountain became a big planter box now. So, you know, this is an uphill battle for me. I haven't.
I think we'd like to see the design.
It's just, I was promised when we go back to the phase two of water conservation that we would put water in that water fountain, but now it's all just a planter box. And I just want to go on record and say it's very ugly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion on the item?
I move the item.
Seconded.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetyan.
Yes.
Ajarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
And what's next?
Next item on the agenda is City Council and Staff Comments.
Comments?
Madam Mayor. I want to bring to our residents' attention that the beginning of September, actually starting August 29, a portion of Maryland Avenue between Broadway and Wilson will be closed through traffic. And this is the pilot initial stage of our plan to turn Maryland into a Paseo, a pedestrian-friendly open space, where our residents and guests can come and enjoy some pedestrian atmosphere. There will be chairs and tables set out. We hope that the local restaurants and cafes will use the space. As such, as restaurants and cafes, there will be live music performances that have already been scheduled for the pilot period, which will last from 30 to 90 days. And why is it a pilot? We are trying to basically evaluate how this is working out. We're certainly hoping that it's going to work out great. But just to be careful, we're going to proceed cautiously and hope that it attracts, it's something that our residents enjoy. Now, there's been a lot of marketing and outreach done with the local businesses, and overwhelmingly, businesses are very happy with this idea. There are a couple that have some concerns as to how this is going to impact their business. I assure you that the city staff is going to work very closely with them to alleviate all of their concerns and make sure that they're not negatively impacted. And I do believe personally that in the long term, they will all be positively, the impact will be very, very positive. There is, is there a website that our residents can go to and look at the, what's been scheduled for Maryland for the next month or so, two months? Because I have the list in front of me, I'm just wondering.
Good evening, Councilmember. Yes, we will go ahead and put this on the City of Glendale's Economic Development website. We're just finalizing the marketing material now, and we'll also push this out on social media.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, so keep an eye out and be ready to have some more open space in Glendale where you can come out with your family or by yourself and enjoy, have a good time. One more item, Madam Mayor. I, about three years ago, I think, I asked for support from council on the idea of term limits. And at the time, I didn't get enough support to get that issue on the, on the next ballot. And I would like to do that, if not for the next ballot, for November ballot, maybe for the April 2017 ballot. So I want to ask for support from someone, okay? Madam Mayor, I have the support, for staff to come back with some kind of a report on this. So term limits, obviously, they won't be retroactive before, you know, perspective. And we'll take it from there.
For the record, I support the idea as well.
Can I ask though, why you wouldn't make them retroactive? I mean, if the goal is to?
I don't think it's legal to make them retroactive. Is it, can you make it retroactive? It wasn't there when whoever got elected, got elected. I will personally commit my first term to whatever the term limit is. I will make it retroactive for myself.
We'll bring back that discussion point.
But I can't impose it on others.
We'll bring it back as far as what can be done, whether you can apply pre-existing terms. I think you can, but we'll bring it back as part of the discussion.
Very well.
Any other? Mr. Ajarian?
I just want to state quietly in our consent calendar, a motion accepting about $600,000 in traffic improvement money was passed. This is going to improve the traffic light synchronization between Glendale and Burbank, mainly from Glen Oaks Boulevard to Burbank and from South San Fernando Boulevard to Burbank. That was a, that was an effort that I had taken at the MTA to get mitigation money. As you know, they're putting carpool lanes on the I-5 freeway, and Burbank and Glendale are certainly being impacted by that. And there was no extra benefit to Glendale or Burbank, so a pool of money was appropriated for such things as traffic relief and trap, signal, traffic signal synchronization. And so I don't know how long that's going to be rubic. I imagine it's going to be six months to a year at least until we see the effects. But traffic relief along those two corridors are on the way. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Sinanian, for doing that, because I was, that was number one on my agenda was to bring out.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Garpetyan.
Yes, absolutely. First, I want to acknowledge R.N. McHalian. I think he's here in the audience from the news press. And he's leaving the news press. He's been covering City Hall for a few years, and I just want to wish him the best in your new, in your new position. You're welcome, you're welcome. Second, I've noticed an uptick in, oh.
That's right?
Nope.
Down for me.
I've noticed an uptick in the, the amount of bulky items on our streets. I would, I see it when I'm driving through the sofas, the refrigerators, the chairs, the tables. And, you know, we are, this is becoming a big issue here in our city. I would like to ask Mr. Galanian if he can give us just a little update on what we're doing here in the city to alleviate or kind of address that issue? Anything new coming in the future?
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. We are approaching this issue on several fronts. Your council approved a new position that would entail hiring a dedicated driver, as well as a truck, to supplement what we currently have for collection and pickup of abandoned bulky items. We're currently in recruitment, so that should happen in the next few months. We have also, last March, hired a private service provider, again, to supplement our own crews on a, on a pilot program for over about five or six weeks. And their job was to do sweeps through certain neighborhoods that we have seen an uptick in abandoned items. And that was a very successful program. $50,000 lasted five weeks, but they picked up enormous amounts of bulky items. We are in the process of renewing that contract, and we will have them onboard again. And to supplement what we do, the pickups that we provide, pickup service on trash pickup days, they will go and do entire sweeps within the neighborhoods. We're also in the process of getting prices from vendors for cameras that will catch illegal dumping. We are working with our police department on the enforcement of that. We are also working on new and enhanced outreach programs. We have completed two PSAs in Armenian and Spanish languages. That's being aired on GTV6. We're also, in one neighborhood, have sent out letters explaining options that residents have, trying to educate them on ways to repurpose stuff, donate stuff. They don't always have to dump them. And also to remind them that we do have this free pickup service that all they have to do is go through the website, leave a message via voicemail, and they'll be picked up. There is no reason to dump and abandon, whereas they can call our department. And it will take a few days, like I said, but they will get picked up. So these are four different items that are working, we are working on, hoping to put a dent in this issue.
I, thank you. I think it's important for all the residents to know that there is a process, there is a number. If you will give us the phone number, that they can call, they can take a picture and send it in to you, so that if you have furniture, or if you see someone moving out of your apartment or the house next door, and they put it out on the street, you know what number to call. The residents can, can report it, and then you will eventually pick it up. Can you give that number, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that number is 818-548-3916. We also have an app for it.
My Glendale.
My Glendale app. It's, it's very easy to use. Take a picture, and it goes to our service center, and we get the notifications to pick them up.
And we ask the public to be patient, because there is, there is a lot going on in our, as far as the dumping on the streets. So I just wanted them to know that you do have a process and you do have a program in effect. And hopefully, people will hear this and see this tonight and, and know what to do if they see a sofa or a table on their street. They can call that number or use their app. Thank you, thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Appreciate that. My second request is pertaining to the uptick in illegal development or housing construction without permits or with permits and then overstepping permits. And I know that I've been getting a lot of emails about that, that this is going on in the city, that they get a permit, they don't, they overstep it. Mr. Lansvain, can you tell us what is in the process right now? Or is it coming up?
Sure. We, we in our department have noticed it as well. Couple of things that we've done, we, our building inspectors actually have administrative citation authority, so we have gotten them up to speed on that. They can actually issue a site along with a stop work order. Once we're aware of some illegal construction, building happening, we'll take whatever steps are appropriate to correct the situation, stop the work, correct the situation. That may mean coming in for additional approvals. As part of our streamlined report back to you, I would like, our staff and I will be addressing this to you and giving you some suggestions on perhaps some more strict penalties for this kind of activity. My cellphone usage. More strict penalties for that, but we'll include that, we're scheduling that for September 13th. So we'll be back to you with some ideas on, on, again, some penalties for that. Then the idea would be to push that new, that new code out, let people know ahead of time.
Thank you. And, and I think it's good for the residents to know that a lot of this is complaint-driven, because we don't have a lot of staff to go out and just look at every single application of the permit that's going on. So again, if you see something and you don't know if it's permitted, make a phone call, come down to City Hall, check on it, and, or check the website?
Sure. On our website, Community Development, we have the community portal where you can put in the address. You can see what permits have been issued. If you, if you see some activity that you don't think is supposed to be happening, call our office, and we'll send somebody out to, to take a look at it right away.
Thank you. And I can speak for myself, because we had that going on next door to us. No permits. And the city came out, stopped the work, and, and the people, people had to get the permit. So it does work, the system does work. Staff is here to do a good job, and, and they will, but they need to know what's going on. So thank you, Mr. Lansvain, very much.
Question.
Mr. Garpetyan?
Yeah, just to, just a follow-up question. How do we enforce our landscape ordinance, the one that we approved a few months ago? Because there are some illegal construction going on. Maybe, you know, they get permits and they overdo the permits. But the numbers compared to the landscape ordinance that we had and what's going on in the city is, it's mind-boggling. And I wanted to know, how are we going to enforce our ordinance as far as landscaping was? Because our inspectors are driving around, they can see the landscaping a lot faster than they can see the illegal construction. So I wanted to know, what, what is it that we are, we're doing on that aspect?
Mr. Garpetyan, we are primarily, given the, the amount of staff that we have, we are primarily complaint-driven. If we see something, it really needs to be egregious for us, because there is a caseload that they're taking of people that have said, hey, you need to pay attention to this. If the council would like for us to be doing that and load it into the workplace, or I'm sorry, the caseload, we can do that as well. But we're trying to prioritize based on complaint-driven. We see this, and it doesn't look like it's right. So we have somebody going out and inspecting that.
Do we know how many cases of the complaint-driven illegal constructions are out there? How many do we have right now? Five, 10, 20?
I don't know. I can get the number for you.
Yeah, because I think, I think it's as important as, as building structures, the landscaping is. And if you don't enforce our ordinance, I think they're just destroying some of these neighborhoods. Because they take all the landscaping out and put bark in there or put gravel in there, and that's it, they're done. So, and us rolling back to the second phase of water conservation, going back to three days of watering, I think, I think we need to not look into it. I think we have to enforce our laws, and there's nowhere.
I agree. No other, no other answer but to agree. I would make a clarification. The illegal building construction typically that is handled by a building inspector, who will be notified and go out on the site, stop work order. Some of the other things, like landscape and other code violations, that's handled by our Neighborhood Services Code Compliance Section. So just the other day, we had a call. Somebody said, you know, it smells under our apartment like sewage. Send a code inspector out there to fix that. Those are the, the kind of complaints that they're, they're looking into. Again, if you'd like us to patrol and, and find those and initiate those cases, we can do that, and we'll load it into our current caseload.
I think I, I want to ask, see, I want to ask everyone to please turn off your cellphones, it's very distracting. I think we need to, we need to look into that. This is, this is not something that is going to go away, so.
Okay, thank you. I think that would, that would require hiring extra staff, wouldn't I think? How many inspectors do we have? Two?
Well, we, we have three regular inspectors, three assistant inspectors.
For the entire city?
For the whole city.
For the entire city.
That, that's why it's complaint-driven, because we can't, we just don't have the staff to get out and just drive the city all, all day.
No, I'm not saying to drive the city all day. I mean, the inspectors are out there driving the city, going to a job or going to inspect the property. On their way, if they see something that is all taken out and destroyed, basically, they can, they can, they can look into that to see if they had permits to do that, that work or not. I mean, it's not, it's not, I'm not saying to just drive around the city all day long. If they're on their way to, to an inspection and they see a front yard that is all modified, and you can tell, I mean, the front, there's nothing else left except gravel or bark, you can, you can, you can look into that. I mean, that's, it doesn't need extra, extra bodies.
Do you do that, Mr. Lansvain?
No.
Typically, they've got a schedule, and they're trying to catch that schedule, and so that's not, that's why they're not stopping. They're trying to get that, to that next complaint-driven case. But again, if that's the wish of the council, we'll have them do that and stop and make that investigation when they see it.
I think they should, otherwise why have laws? Why have an ordinance?
Is there an opinion from anyone else on the council?
Maybe rather than sharing opinions on it, so either we agendaize it for discussion, or Phil, I think Phil has said he's going to prioritize, look into and bring back more information to council later time.
All right, fine. Okay, thank you.
But when, later time is, means what?
We can do it in September.
Thank you. Mr. Sinanian?
One more item, Madam Mayor, thank you. So I'd like to actually invite Jennifer McLean up to the microphone and speak a little bit about Glendale Tech Week.
Great, well, good evening, councilmember, mayor, members of the council. I am thrilled tonight to update you on Glendale Tech Week. This is our inaugural event. It kicks off from September 14th to September 17th. And I must say, it's been very exciting, as we've been developing the program, to hear folks time and again say, oh, Glendale's having a tech week. It's about time. So there's a lot of enthusiasm behind this. We, our, our goal with this event is really to highlight the great innovation that's happening here in Glendale, highlight the companies that are here, remind their employees that this is a great place to live, work, and play, and then to encourage future tech businesses to ultimately call Glendale home. So we have a stellar lineup, and I wanted to just highlight some of the, the items on the website. You can find this at glendaletechweek.com. Some of the speakers, we have more than 50 speakers and 20 events lined up throughout the week. the week. And what we're asking folks to do is simply go on the website, there's a number of free events, we have receptions as well. You can buy a general admission pass, that will allow you to go to all of the receptions. But some of the events, you can just scroll down below, and you can start seeing the number of events. We have speakers that include folks from YP, LegalZoom, Disney, CBRE, Age of Learning, Caruso Affiliates, Sidebench, WeWork, Incubate USC, Urgent Nine, Glendale Community College, JPL, Service Titan, and the list goes on. Again, it's been just very thrilling to hear of all the folks within and around Glendale that want to participate in this. I also just wanted to highlight some of the speakers. You can see we have nearly 50 that are lined up here. Mr. Rick Caruso will be kicking off some of our festivities at, an event at CBRE alongside Louis Horn at the new Masonic Temple building.
Hey, I know that guy. Is that Tom Lorenz?
It sure is. We want to highlight the innovation happening within City Hall as well. We also have a meet the funders event at Bourbon Steakhouse, a kickoff reception, and tours of CBRE, in case, in case folks haven't been there, a rum and cigar rolling party that has been sponsored by our friends at the Dominican Republic consulate, a pitch fest featuring 10 companies, and numerous panels and luncheons. So we encourage folks to just check out the glandaletechweek.com website. We have musical guests as well, we have a Doors concert, featuring a founding member of the Doors, Robbie Krieger, that will be on Friday, September 16th, and that, the proceeds from that concert will benefit the Music Path. I can talk all day about this. It's really been a wonderful, wonderful event, and we hope that members of the council and the community attend as well. So again, please check out www.glandaletechweek.com, and we look forward to seeing everybody there.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll just point out that this is part of our overall initiative in, in the city of Glendale, to accentuate our tech industry, and, and as many will, many of you will know, we're in the process of actually working on a path, or the path to the path of how to develop the, the tech industry, and make sure that Glendale is a solid presence in the 21st century economy. And I believe that's coming up sometime in the next couple of months, the, the report from the consultant. And here we have our first-ever Glendale Tech Week, and we're very excited and happy about it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also want to add that it was Councilmember Sinanian who brought the idea of us getting involved in technology in this way, and we see it now, and a whole week dedicated to it. Jennifer, you've done a great job, it looks like to me, and congratulations, and I look forward to that week. And I hope you have a really good attendance.
Thank you, you and me both, and it's been a, a true team effort, so thank you for all of your support.
Sure.
And judging from our tech mixers, that we've had, three of them now, right? All, all of them packed, all of them over capacity, this is promising to be no different.
Great, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our council comments. Staff, next item.
Next item is community event announcements. This is reserved for three-minute announcements regarding events taking place around the community. Also, if anyone wishes to forego their five-minute oral communications, they could submit an orange card, but we do not have any, but we do have one card for community event.
Thank you, and that would be Matt Gange. Is Roberta coming up?
Oh, she's passing out some flyers, I think, for the event. Yeah. So, yeah, I'm Matt Gange, I'm the president of Glendale Beautiful, and I'm here to invite everybody here, and everybody watching at home, to our 66th Annual Fall Dinner for Glendale Beautiful. It's our fundraiser event. And it's going to take place on Thursday, September 8th, at 5:30, and it's at the Casa Adobe de San Rafael. It's 1330 Dorothy Drive in Glendale. And it's $30 a person for our fundraiser dinner, and we are asking for reservations, so we can make sure we have the right amount of food. And the program is going to be really great. We have ambient music from a local artist named Muma, he's going to be playing a collection of modular synthesizers. And we have Alec Barterseuf, he is the, you might know Alec from Walk By Glendale, Coalition for a Green Glendale, and he's also Glendale Transportation and Parking Commissioner. And he's going to be speaking about...
Excuse me, can I interrupt you for a second? Can we have some, some silence in the chambers?
Thanks. And Alex, Alec is going to be speaking on community garden opportunities and prospects in Glendale. And, so yeah, September 8th, Thursday, hope everyone can be there. And if you could RSVP to Sharon Wiseman by September 2nd to reserve your space, her email is Sharon, S-H-A-R-O-N, Sharon@JetCafe.org. Thank you so much, hope to see you all there.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. And, next item concludes our announcements.
Before we go there, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
There was one item related to the proposals, request for proposal process, whether or not the council wanted to agendize that for a subsequent meeting, related to Rockhaven.
Oh.
Yes. So, Madam Mayor, we learned that in the RFP process for Rockhaven, there was one submission made, which was literally minutes late. And I would like to agendize that, to discuss whether the council would consider doing equity to that late submittal.
Second.
And let's just hear what the story is behind it, and make a decision.
Can we have a second?
Second.
So that will be agendized.
For next week.
Okay. Very good. Next item.
Next item under adoption of ordinances at 7A is changing zoning classification to the precise plan of design and amending zoning map in association with PCC 1601571 and PDR 1601574 2608 2612 Honolulu Avenue, 2635 Sycamore Avenue. This was introduced by Councilmember Sinanian on August 9, 2016.
Do we have a motion for the ordinance? Approved?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman, Garpettian?
Yes.
Njarjan?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. And, thank you very much. Now we will, we're going to take a recess from the City Council meeting, and move to the joint meeting of the City Council and Glendale Housing Authority.
9A is a hearing, Director of Community Development and Public Works regarding 2016 Congestion Management Program Self-Certification Process. 9A1 is a resolution finding the city of Glendale to be in accordance with the congestion management program and adopting the congestion management program local development report.
Thank you. Report, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, ma'am, just very briefly, this is the annual self-certification we do, in anticipation of Metro actually utilizing this report to help create the funding incentives and land use incentives that could someday lead to a greater, more regionalized land use strategy. So, under the report that you have, we have to compile a report each year that talks about the number of units that are developed in different categories, as well as commercial development, all types of development, really. We have a hearing that typically no one comes to, and then we do the self-certification and send it off to Metro. Now, we have to do this, however, because there are real consequences for not doing the hearing, by way of not allowing us to, to receive funding through various programs and incentives. So, with that, if you have specific questions, either Mr. Lansaffin, or I can try to address those, but this is a public hearing. You can open the hearing.
Yes, let's open the public hearing, thank you. I have, do I have any questions from council? Phone is that, could you please? Thank you. Any comments from council before I take the speaker? There a speaker?
No, there is no speaker on this. That is for oral communication.
Okay, we have no speakers.
In 24 years, I have not had a speaker on this, and I thought, oh my, we were going to let the balloons come down.
I'm going to call him up anyway. Where's Jim? Come on up and speak on this, just to, okay. Okay.
That's just cruel.
Any council comments? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Garpettian?
Yes.
Njarjan?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. And what's next?
Madam Mayor, next item is oral communication discussion, limited time, it's not part of this agenda, speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. City Manager, Mayor, further the matter, to the appropriate department for investigation and report. You have one card.
And, I have one card? I'm sorry, Mr. Ochoa, it wasn't for your item after all. Jim Nocella.
Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is Jim Nocella. I'm a volunteer with American Civil Liberties Union, and I'm here to talk about Constitution Day. Constitution Day is a holiday established by Congress, and it's going to be September 16th this year. What happens is volunteers, anybody, anybody who's interested, anybody who thinks it's important, goes into school classrooms, and they explain the Constitution for one period to the kids. And you're trained, there's a two-hour training done by the ACLU. You don't have to be a member of the ACLU. We had Republicans last year, we, I did it last year, several schools in Glendale, and I was amazed at how successful we were. I went into the classroom, the kids were so interested in the Constitution, they had all kinds of questions, I couldn't get out of the classrooms, they surrounded the desk with their questions. So what we do is we bring the Constitution to them, and it comes alive to them. We try to talk about the problems that they might have regarding mostly the Bill of Rights, but I explain the whole Constitution, the different areas of government, and it's just a, it's a joyful experience, and I, very, you, you get a great deal of satisfaction out of doing it. The schools in the area, we have one school this year with 800 students who want us to come in. So there's a great demand from the schools, there's like five or six schools in Glendale that want us. So our problem is that we need volunteers. We need people to take the two-hour training, and go into the classroom, and teach it to the students. It's, once you know the material, and, you know, most people here, you know, you're public servants, you're good at standing up in front of groups, and you probably know a lot about the Constitution. It's, you, you would be very good volunteers to go into the classroom. So I passed around some forms, hopefully every one of you have a form, and if you would like to volunteer, that would be great. If we have well-known city government officials going out in the classrooms, I can't think of, I can't think of a better volunteer to go into the classroom. So that's why I'm here, just to let you know about this program, and if you want to do this, it's a, it's a great experience, fill out the forms, I'll be, I'll stick around to collect them.
Mr. Nocella?
Yes.
Just one comment. First of all, this is a great, great program, I'm really glad you're doing it. We have a program now that you can, if you're a nonprofit, which you are, and I'm sure that ACLU qualifies, you can run a PSA on Channel 6, that will run in kind of our rotation, and you, I, I believe, and I'm looking behind you to Tom Lorenz, to be sure that, that you would qualify, could go and tape something at GTV6, and we can run it, and hopefully generate you a bunch of volunteers from people who watch GTV6 frequently, and surprisingly enough, there are a lot of people in the community that really do watch, and it's a good way to get your message out. So I would suggest that we do that for you.
Sounds good to me.
Maybe we could even do the whole program? Teach the whole?
We could do, it's only an hour, you know, and, you know, we could do the...
Just the Bill of Rights.
The Constitution thing on there.
And when are you doing this? I know you said five days, but...
Well, in five days, we're having, we're having the trainings next week, and then it, it happens on the 16th of September. We don't always do it on that day, because like last year, I did it five different days, because it was just such a huge demand, we couldn't do it in one day. But around that time.
Do you do it in one particular spot, like at one of our schools, or do you go around to locations?
We go to different schools.
You do.
Different schools, and we stay there all day. You know, you know, typically, we'll have two or three volunteers going to five, so like 15 classes. But there's, demand is huge, I mean, it's like, it's, it's just a drop in the bucket.
Well, thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Mr. Nocella, which schools are, which schools are going to be part of the program?
I can't think of the name of the, well, Crescent Valley High School is, did it last year, they're going to do it this year. Last year, Daly High School did it, I'm sure they'll do it this year. I can't think of the name of the school that has 800, 800 students taking American History this year, but it's a, it's a middle school, it's a middle school here in Glendale.
Probably where they go with it.
Middle school.
It's a middle, it's a middle school, yeah, so, it might be white, but I, I don't want to say it is, because I'm not sure.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. And, next item.
Plus there's a new business, we...
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned, 9:15. Thank you, good night.